Reports, town administrator update, and then the following action items. Consideration and possible action to confirm the appointment of Steve Leado. How am I saying that?
Leado.
Leado, okay. Has a police officer with Sturbridge Police Department effective July 18, 2023. Consideration and possible action on the appointment of Bailey Applegate to the Sturbridge Cable Advisory Committee. Consideration and possible action on the app, an application for a 5K road race for Sturbridge Academy Parent Teacher Association, Kathy Torville for Saturday, September 30. Consideration and possible action on the appointment of Ellen Thibodeau as a part-time program assistant for the Sturbridge Senior Center. Consideration and possible action on the application for a one-day liquor license for Bay State Brewery for the cornhole tournament on July 29. Consideration and possible application for a one-day liquor license for the Hamilton, Rod and God Club Car Show on Friday, August 4. Consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Heather Egan to the Sturbridge Lake Advisory Committee as a Walker Pond rep. Consideration and possible action, reappointment of Lee Darren as the Slack Cedar Lake rep. I mean Heather and Lee are troublemakers, but I think we can get through it, right, Mary? Consideration and possible action on the resignation letter from Christina Mappleback from the Tantascu School Committee. Old business, new business, correspondence, citizens forum adjourn. Would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Also, we'd like to take a moment of silence just for everybody suffering from the heat throughout the southwest and the south and those fires up north. So just a moment of silence, please. Okay. All right. Public service announcements. Mary Lou.
Nothing there.
Mary Dowling.
No.
Oh, Mary.
No, I want to give the date and time for the cornhole because we don't meet before.
Okay, I can give it as a front. What is the date? So that is on July 29, 2023, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. So that is a fun event. I think they had one this last Saturday, right? Who was on there on Saturday?
Can I backtrack?
Okay, sure.
It's going to relate, it's going to relate, Mr. Chair. I want to thank everybody involved in the 3.1, 3.1 road race, the Special Events Committee in conjunction with the Festival of Giving Trees, which is an annual event held at La Salle where the proceeds are given to mostly breast cancer research, but cancer research in general. This year, we teamed up with them and we had a kind of Christmas in July road race. I was not able to be involved this time. It was my family reunion, but I understand from my friends who participated, it was extremely successful, well-attended, and I want to thank everybody involved, including Johnny Rice, who was our race director. I will give an update next week as to how much money was raised for cancer awareness, but it started on the common, and you might have seen the signs throughout town, and it was really a great event. You can walk it or run it. So for the future, we're going to try to maybe make that an annual event in July. So that's what was going on in the common.
Okay, I got my wires crossed. All right. So, all right, department reports.
I just got an email from, was it Rice or Mr. Rice?
Rice, with an R.
Email from him today thanking the police officers for what they did out there. So he was, he was very happy with their service. So tonight I have May reports and June. May, 2,867 calls for service, pretty busy month, 53 arrests slash complaints. 2,070 motor vehicle citations issued. That could be a warning citation. 779 business checks. Operation-wise, we had, we assisted the schools with bus evacuations, both at the high school, Burgess and OSV Academy. Started up the boat patrols. We're out on Big Allen, South Pond, conducted 12 inspections during the month. That's pretty much it for operation. Training continues as usual. And for the schools, had a total of nine, 18 calls up there. Some threats involving some threats against the motor public up there. Somebody was making threats as cars were going by. Couple ambulance calls to Burgess, senior high school, couple assists, citizens, which that was another threat, but the individual involved was, lived in Brimfield, so they were referred to Brimfield Police. Disturbance that involved parents getting upset at one of the ballgames. So they're getting a little heated up there.
Vinskies go to these things.
I'm going to tell them.
Another investigation, a hit and run up there. It looked like it was more of a, the hit and run was, from when I was reading the report, it looked more like a vandalism. Looked like somebody hit one of the cars with a sledgehammer, or two of the cars, rather. While the kids were gone away at the prom, they parked over at the senior high parking lot. Unfortunately, the cameras didn't pick up anything over there, so that's really it for May. Have you got any questions for May?
Yeah, so I have, mine are all dated 2022, but I'm not sure if anybody else is having this. Yeah, so I'm just assuming that that's just a typo.
Yeah, mine are dated 2023. I don't know.
So it's like we might have older, because the cover's, yeah.
Yeah. I'd like to read across what you have. Maybe we just even change the date on ours, or maybe it's wrong.
Yeah, well, mine, is your call for service saying number 2,867 for May?
No. No, 2,440.
Yeah, so you probably do have last years. I don't know how you got last years, but.
No worries.
We can take, I'll have them resend them, resend them over.
Just a little gesture.
Yeah. So I apologize for that.
That happens.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Of course, yeah.
I know you've answered this question before, so I apologize. Under mutual aid, is that when we've asked for it, or when we have given it, or is it a combination of both?
So what I, what we have here is both. I wanted to have a fair, fair representation on both sides when, you know, every year I'm asking for manpower, and this is one way for the board or the town and the town manager just to take a look at it. But the requests are when we're calling for help. So this in May, we were called for help seven times, which isn't that bad at all. That's probably a pretty fair response, and we went out of town twice. But if you go, you can see year-to-date, we're up to 52 times this year that we requested outside help to come help us, and we've gone out of town a total of four times.
Okay, because we don't have the right.
Yes.
But my question is, so we have last years, but for example, you have May 14, year-to-date total 79 for 2022, year total for 2021, 63. Are those combinations of when we've asked for help and given it?
No, it's split. So if you look.
Not split on ours.
Maybe last year, did you split it last year? You may not have.
You know, I think what happened was somebody may have asked me last year, well, how many times are we sending our people out of town?
Okay.
So then we started adding.
Okay, because otherwise, this isn't that helpful, because then we don't know if we were giving it.
Correct, so it is changed. So my, mine, which you'll get tomorrow, I'll make sure that you guys get email, copy of this, but I split it between responses and requests.
Okay, so just out of curiosity for May, can you just read it to us, how many times we requested it?
So we requested mutual aid in May, seven times, year-to-date, 52 times, and compared to 2022, like you just said, 79 times.
And how many times have we given it?
Twice in May.
Yeah.
Four times in 2023, year-to-date as of May, and then four times total in 2022.
Okay, so we're asking for help a lot more than we're giving it.
Yes.
And we were, so when they ask for help, are we just saying we can't help because we don't have the manpower, or are they not?
We don't, we don't really get that much calls for, for requests, because usually if we can send somebody, we will. And these calls, I always want to say it's important that these calls are not, when we're calling people into town, it's not for, hey, somebody locked their keys in their car, can you come over and help us? This is, our people are tied up on emergencies, cannot leave, but yet another emergency is happening simultaneously. So whether it be a motor vehicle crash, a domestic call, something that we need an immediate response, because anything that we can hold, while we're tied up, we like to take care of our own, our own business ourselves, we will hold the calls. So if it's a motor vehicle lockout or something that's non-emergency but needs, requires a police service, we will hold the call until our guys free up, then we'll go to the calls.
Yeah, I get it.
And even if we clear a call, and we already called, say, state police or South Bridge, whoever's Brookfield, whoever's helping us, if our officers clear up before they're cleared, we will then go to that call and take, take the call back over.
Got it. But when you say four times we've given it in both 2021 and 22, it's because nobody, our surrounding towns aren't asking for help and not because we can't help them.
Correct, yes.
Because that's a very low figure.
Yes, it's, it is, it is very low. And I don't know, in fairness to the surroundings, I don't know if South Bridge maybe says, maybe South Bridge, when they're calling for assistance, maybe they're calling the state police directly, and the state police maybe are going there. Or if Brookfield, like I know the Brookfields lean on each other a lot, so Brookfield will call East Brookfield or West Brookfield, they're not really going to call Sturbridge to go there because it's such a far distance. We'll call Brookfield, say there's alarm going off at Tantascu, or something's going on at Tantascu, they're much closer a lot of times than we are. So Brookfield, we will request them for maybe an ambulance call or something at, at the school in that side. It depends on what side of town we're at, of who we're calling.
But it's very disproportionate, like 79 times we've asked for help.
Correct.
Okay. Jamie?
Yeah, go ahead.
Chief, the resource officers, do they work a full school day?
Well, yes, the junior high and high school officer does. The Burgess officer works, I believe it's seven and a half hours, because he's got, by Federal Labor Act, he's got the canine, he has to take time to take care of the dog. So what we did was we adjusted his schedule back when there was some complaints. So he comes in later, so he's there for morning traffic and stays till school gets out, so we get the best bang for his buck. So he's there for the school day, but he doesn't work a full eight hours.
We looked into trying to extend him an hour and pay it out a separate way, and we were told by law we cannot. The law, because of the canine, requires that he has that half hour.
Yeah, it's, it's usually, our other canine gets an hour, our other canine handler gets an hour, but what we did with this, this time is we're compensating some in overtime, because you got to, some of it's in overtime and some of it's in comp time to, so he can still have the care and maintenance. There's been lawsuits over the years about taking care of the canine, so.
But the big key was making sure that he was there at the two key times.
Drop off and pick up.
And like right now, the SROs are obviously not, not in school, so they're just put back into the regular rotation to help out and with the regular patrol force, and a lot of people take vacations in the summertime, so having them around in the summertime really helps a lot. And we still try to do some kids programs during the summer to stay interactive with the schools as well.
Okay, on another thing, the accident reports. Could we, if it isn't too much trouble, get the report on how many accidents occur on Route 20, Cracker Barrel, that area?
Yeah, we can, we can isolate that for you.
Because when it's reported, it just says Charlton Road, so.
Right, right, and it's, it's, it is difficult, because it, well, it's not difficult, we can do it. You put in a number, we'll have to get the street number from here to here and see how many crashes are in, in that. What are you looking for, from like Walmart to Cracker Barrel in that area?
Yeah, the area that people say there's a crash every hour.
Yeah, so.
We know there's not, but.
We can, we can, I can isolate that down.
Okay, thank you.
What is the most problematic intersection pass, you know, New Boston Road out to Charlton?
I would say the Cracker Barrel intersection right now is by far the worst and most dangerous to go in and out of there.
Is it people taking lefts?
Most likely, yeah, I think if there was no left-hand turn either way, that would eliminate a lot of problems, but there's, with new developments going in and across the street, I understand there's a Starbucks going in, that's, there's going to be more problems unless it's.
So that's, that's, yeah, so it's, it is being addressed. We just finally got DOT to approve signal work at the pilot, the EV center. That's going to change the whole traffic dynamic, and DOT is aware of the possible development across the street from Cracker Barrel, and they're working with that developer on right-hand turns out only and a whole host of things. So that, we actually may see some improvement because of the signaling over at the pilot. They eventually want to do the roundabout, but they understood they were, that we couldn't, that the EV center couldn't do the roundabout yet, and that that's what they want 10 to 15 years from now, whenever DOT gets around to doing it, but then in the interim, the signaling would actually help us.
Yeah, because that Starbucks is going to be really close to the Pike exit, right? So if you have a left-hand turn coming and a tractor or trailer truck and any type of misread, that's pretty deadly.
So they're working, they're working really closely with DOT on what types of access is in and out of that, that Starbucks lot and how they lay out of that.
Yeah, because that's, that's going to be, Chief, can you kind of look into that too, because that, that's, that's a, because it's practically the Pike exit, right?
I sit in on all the meetings that they have with the DOT, and I offer my input, like, you know, if it was up, if it was up to me, I'd do a solid divider right up through that area then.
Yeah.
But you know what, a solid, solid median, so nobody can take left, left-hand turns or do something like they did in Charlton, because they were having so many problems on Route 20 in Charlton, they did the solid divider. But I'm sure the businesses would have severe blowback, like, hey, I can't, I'm losing so many customers because of this. But I think the traffic light is going to really help out in that area in general, because it's going to slow people down, and I think they're talking, there was some talk about maybe narrowing the roadways, a little, the, not the road itself, but the markings to slow traffic.
Traffic mitigation.
So is it DOT that determines whether they can take a left-hand turn or a right-hand turn?
DOT's traffic engineer is.
Engineers that do that, they'll, they'll have us on their meetings and stuff, like they're taking a look at, now, we were out there a few months ago for Route 49 at Putnam, because they recognize that, that's a very, very dangerous crossing there as well, so we go out there, we do site visits, and we brainstorm some of ideas.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else with the chief?
I got another question. So last summer, I know we had a lot of car thefts. Is that down this summer?
Yes.
I don't think you thought it was coming from Springfield or?
I've been seeing it in other communities locally, Auburn, actually, Chase started in Auburn just last week, I think it was, and there was a pursuit that came into Sturbridge, and our people, it was like 3:30 in the morning, two cars, we stop-stick them, so we were able to get one car with the flat tires. As they were coming down by Walmart, we were able to get them, but there was two cars involved, they bailed out of one car, jumped in the other car and off to probably Hartford they went, and then one of them didn't make it, and he was found snooping in cars down here on Hall Road, and he was picked up by our, my officers and brought, brought to Auburn PD.
And so I apologize to the city of Springfield, it was Hartford that you thought.
Yeah, the group that we're aware of is going out of Hartford. All these cars are recovered in, in Hartford, so. But yes, right now, it's been.
Don't use the Q word.
Yeah.
Did you knock on the Fumica?
All right, anything else, Mary?
Jeez, I feel, I've just.
There's nothing to be sorry about.
All right, and then my last question for tonight of you is, now, in the past, we've had a grant where we do little sting operations to make sure we're not serving alcohol underage.
Yep.
Have we done that lately? I feel like we haven't.
The state has not given that grant out in.
Three years, maybe?
Quite a few years. We have done other things that I will say would be probably, you know, let's just say that we try to continue that on our own, funding it ourselves, but we, it's not a fully-funded operation, but we, I've sent letters out to businesses saying, we may be out checking, we may not be out checking, but, you know, stuff that we're not spending money, that we didn't budget for to get out there and do that, because that would include paying younger people to go and, and try to buy, but the grants haven't been there. If they, if they were, we would definitely be applying for them.
You try to do it sporadically, and you haven't had any violations?
We haven't had any what?
Any violations?
No, no, nothing. We haven't used operatives at all since.
Oh, you haven't used them at all?
Operatives, no. I do different things by education side of it, saying, you know, we may be coming out looking at your business or.
All right. Well, actually, let's just jump to action item A.
I got June report, that was only May.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make it quick.
And then the weekend.
June was a great month. With June 21st, we received our accreditation status, which is, you know, every three years we get reaccredited if we do what we say we're doing with our policies and procedures. This year was a very challenging year, because Post came out within this year, and there was a lot of changes in the way we do business, hiring practices and discipline and all that. So we had to do a sweep in policy changes, and we were very successful at receiving our accreditation. And, you know, it's very important to note that this is a department-wide effort with everybody contributes, from, from our dispatcher to the lieutenants to myself, but how this works with the police department is Lieutenant Joe Lombardi is assigned as the accreditation manager and picks a team of people, sergeants, patrol officers, dispatchers to be involved with this, and they're really the, the core people that make sure that we are doing our policies, and anytime there's, somebody gets hurt on duty, there's certain paperwork that needs to be filled out. If there's a pursuit or somebody gets hit with a baton or there's a use of force, we have to do certain things that accreditation does it, and Lieutenant Lombardi and his team did a fantastic job, so I just want to make sure I recognize them. Robin joined us at the accreditation award presentation, which was very nice and supportive of her to do that. So that was great, great for us to achieve. This now, they switched it up, we're going to what they call the sixth edition, so it's a whole new system that is coming down the pike, so we got three years to figure this next one out. So June 2000, I know, is June 2022 for you folks?
Yes. 2022.
2761 were the calls for service, 61 arrests slash complaints, 315 motor vehicle violations, 554 business checks. Mutual aid was requested 10 times, and we responded out one time in June. Lieutenant Bateman, along with Sergeant Fortier, attended the MAD award, where Officer Garrett Dana and Officer Matt Rosen were both presented with a MAD award for their traffic safety initiatives and focusing on intoxicated drivers out on the road, so MAD recognized them two officers, which was great. 12 boat inspections, four canine activations, continue to do the car seat installs, training continued as, as usual, and that's all I, okay, actually, no, 17 calls at the schools. One was just a minibike that was riding around, there was some suspicious activity, somebody called concerned about, over at Burgess, that there was a family that looked disheveled and it was investigated, and the officers determined everybody was healthy, and they were just taking a, a break there, so there was no, no real issue. There was a speeding complaint, or not a speeding complaint, a complaint rather, on Burgess School Road, that somebody was yelling and punched a vehicle as it drove by while he was trying to walk his kid to school. So that, that was addressed accordingly. Lost debit card, which was found, and then two, two arrests up at the high school for assault and battery with a dangerous weapon. So that was, that was her activity up there.
A student?
Two students, two, two students assaulted another student with, I believe it was a, one was a metal water bottle, and the other one was just a regular water bottle. So I think, I believe it happened on the bus.
If I could add to, I think it was June, we sat with the people on Lake Street, and I just want to thank the police department, DPW, for their efforts as well. We, if you recall, they were talking about how they could gate in and whatnot, and it's, now the ball's in their court if they all decide on how they want to do it, but I just want to thank the PD for working with them on trying to dissuade traffic within our legal confines from going down there, and we continue to work with them on some options.
Did you add some signage? I know that was discussed.
We, yeah, well, we, I think we were working on signage, we put the speed sign up, we've also, the speed signs also go over on Haynes Street.
Yep.
So I just want to thank the department for being really responsive. We've had some constituent issues, and we've been able to.
It's tough. We, we try to address, we get a lot of speeding complaints all over town, we try to address them the best we can, and we can only be so many places at once when we're being called, but we do make a very strong effort to either put our signboard up there, run radar, in conjunction with our, our, our signboard, we follow up with the people that are making complaints to let them know, hey, we did a, one of our signboards is, when it looks like, if you're driving by, it may look like it's off, but it's really recording data so we can get true data. So people may think it's just off, but it's gathering speeds, so what time of day should we be here? Then we will take that, that data, and then we will deploy our officers to match the data that's, that we're getting, so.
And the public response back, because they'll sometimes mail me, email me back, the public is, is very appreciative of the work, so I just want to pass along that there have been a couple of little projects that, you know, don't really bubble above the radar, so you might not see them in a number, but it's something that the police department has been working on, and we've had good public response.
Good, great.
And back in, one more thing back in May, what, a couple of things that we're working on at the police department is, one, one big thing is, I assigned Lieutenant Bateman to head this operation, but we're formed an awards ceremony, so every year, kind of similar to what the fire department does, you, you recognize people that do something throughout the year, maybe have one event where you can publicly invite people and say, say this, but back in, I want to say it was May, or June, May or June, we had a two, two-year-old, almost three-year-old drowning in a pool. Our dispatcher gave life, dispatcher Patty Lucicino gave life-saving efforts over the phone. Two of our young officers, awesome officers, responded, gave CPR, first aid, got a pulse back, assistant with the fire department, they all worked together. This baby is now running around, who we thought was going to be dead, so we're going, that's, that's some type of award that I want to be able to publicly bring out and recognize these officers and firefighters that do this stuff all the time, and I think we've, we've kind of lacked in that area for recognizing our people publicly, and I think they need to be recognized. So we're working on this awards committee and maybe having some type of medal that people, the officers can wear that recognizes different things that they do, whether it be courage or life-saving or something, so that's in the works. Hopefully, we'll have that done by the end of this year.
It's a good idea.
If you, yeah, excellent, if you have a ceremony, sometimes it can be at night rather than during the day, so that people who are working would be able to attend that and show support, you know, that would be good.
Yeah, no, I would, we would try to focus on probably a later afternoon or early evening, maybe in the Fire Bay or something where there's a lot of room where people can stand or do something, but it's in the early stages right now. Historically, we've always recognized people, but it's been, it's usually just a nice letter, hey, we appreciate what you did, did a great job. I just wanted to bring it up another level, so.
Sounds, sounds good. All right, anything further for the chief? Chief, anything further? All right, I think on action item A.
So this is Mr. Steven Leado.
Leado?
Leado.
Steven L.
Officer L.
Pretty fortunate to have such a qualified candidate come in front of us tonight. He's got about nine years in Worcester County Sheriff's Department, and he's also got several years, a combination of approximately four years between Brimfield and Holland, so he's Brimfield-Holland Police Department, so he's coming to us with some policing experience. He has a bachelor's degree in justice and administration from Worcester, Western Connecticut State University. We've completed all his background, his psychological exam, everything that's required, he's qualified to be a Massachusetts police officer. I did, there is one thing that I brought to Robin's attention, he just had a baby a month early.
He looks good.
Obviously.
I'm sure I've never used that line before.
If she could have gotten up, she would have loved to have gotten up. So what I, I'm asking the board is, I'm recommending the appointment of Steven Leado as a police officer instead of an effective date of July 18th, I'd like to push it out to July 20. Instead of an effective date of July 18th, I'd like to even push it out to July 28th to give him some time home with his baby. And he gives him a few extra days before he comes in and starts working with us. And I recommend that he gets hired at the hourly rate of thirty-four eighteen an hour and the benefits of a two-year employee minus the longevity.
Okay. Well, any questions?
I have none.
Eric? Any? Okay. Well, congratulations on the baby. And welcome aboard, I think. So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Steven L.
Lado.
Lado to the police department beginning July 29th at an hourly rate of thirty-four eighteen.
July 28th.
Twenty-eighth, yeah.
Twenty-eighth, not the twenty-ninth. Twenty-ninth, twenty-eighth. Hourly rate of thirty-four eighteen with the benefits of two-year employee minus longevity.
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor? And welcome aboard.
Congratulations. I graduated from West Con.
Oh, perfect. I did it four years, believe it or not.
Good.
Congratulations on both accounts.
Oh, thank you. Three weeks old he is.
What did you name him?
Jonathan Michael.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Steven, where are you at?
More questions?
No, I don't think so.
I live in Tallahassee, Connecticut.
Tallahassee, not very far.
It's not very far.
Nice.
That's not bad.
Has to be within a certain, no, I know.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Right.
Stay cool.
Yeah, definitely. So, okay, I think we're back to the town administrator update because I went a little out of order.
I don't have anything. You will see an item about a resignation for the school committee. We do have to post for a couple of weeks and then that does have to be a joint meeting, particularly with the regional situation. So we will have to set up probably maybe the second August because we've got to post it for a couple of weeks. I don't think.
Yeah, fifteen days, I think.
So it'll probably be maybe our second August meeting to see if the school committee can meet with us that night. If that's all right with you. I just want to touch base. Things have been going pretty well with our summer activities. Farmer's market, I think so far so good. Contents on the common have started, so things are busy. Also, if people are coming in in the public, there's been some moving around in the building across the street. So conservation is moving up to the second floor. Terry is still on the second floor. Annie is still on the second floor. The new administrative assistant will be right where the back door where people come in. And then the back part of that area where conservation was will just be a little sitting area where if somebody wants to come down and talk to somebody, they'll have a little area. If I want to go over and talk to somebody, it'll just be a little extra space where someone can grab someone. But we wanted to have that administrative assistant, that new person on the first floor. And they're actually going to be right where people come in, which is what we were kind of hoping for. So we had a few different options of how we could do it and this is where we ended up. So that move is happening sort of now. We've been interviewing. We had a lot of good applicants. Michelle and Jean, along with Terry, have been doing some of the interviewing. And we're down to three finalists plus one more to interview. And we hopefully will have that position appointed for the, for early August.
Beautiful. I just had one comment on the farmer's market. It's doing beautifully. It has a lot of support. I know it was canceled this past Sunday because of the weather, obviously. If maybe the cancellation can go to more, you know, places other than Facebook. I think it was only announced in Facebook and somebody involved isn't on Facebook and, you know, showed up. So I don't know if we can put it on our website or email the people who typically are involved.
We'll get that, yeah. We can do that. Thank you. All right. That's it for me.
Great. All right. So I think we're on to action item B, which is consideration and possible action on the appointment of Bailey Applegate to the Sturbridge Cable Advisory Committee for a term to expire July 13th, 2026.
This person had shown interest. Cable Advisory, actually, I think it responded to her. I think our. Yeah, there was a Facebook back and forth discussion and I believe that someone on the cable advisory said, we'd love to have you on if you have thoughts and ideas. And so she put in her name and here's her resume and so.
She seems qualified. Anybody have any questions, concerns?
I do. I'd like to hold it to have Bailey actually in.
Up here?
I do have a few questions.
Okay.
All right. And is that everybody else fine with that? Makes sense to me. All right. So we will just form that. All right. Okay. And then we are on to consideration and possible action on application for a 5K road race for Old Sturbridge, Old Sturbridge Academy Parent Teacher Association slash Cathy Torville for Saturday, September 30th, 2023 for the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM.
Everything seems to be in order from our end.
And they've done this before, correct? They've used the same route with no issues?
Yeah. And I don't know what this route is, but typically when you find a route that you like, you keep it. But I know before it's gone through the village.
Yeah, I think that's.
Oh, it's attached. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I think there's a couple, there's two. One's 3.8, one's two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it was suggested there, there'd be a detail. And she said she wanted to wait to see if the application got approved, but she's already spoken to the police.
Great.
There will be a detail.
Yeah, because of the emails, yeah.
All good except for the misspelling.
All right. Subject to that minor critique, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the application for a 5K road race, road race for Old Sturbridge Academy Parent Teacher Association Cathy Torville for Saturday, September 30th, 2023 for the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM.
Second.
All those in favor? The eyes have it. All right, we're on to action item D. Consideration and possible action on the appointment of Ellen Thibodeau as part-time program assistant at the Sturbridge Senior Center at the starting salary of $21.56 effective July 18th, 2023.
Is there any recommendation from Leslie?
Yeah, she's on vacation. We weren't going to make her leave vacation for this.
Oh, I don't know why not.
I would have made her.
I think we can trust all these judgment on this one. I'm not, yeah, I trust Leslie.
I'm fine. Questions, concerns, thoughts?
No, not on the appointment per se, but again, on page eighty-one, reference, telephone number is redacted.
We did look into that. We always have. Michelle, we talked about it. We do redact a lot of personal information like that.
Yeah, but not for a reference. I mean, how are we going to call?
Well, would you be individually calling references?
Yes, we have.
Then it has to, you, I would, I would probably say then to call Michelle individually because this is public record. This goes out to everybody.
Yeah, but usually when you ask somebody if you can use them as a reference, you also say, can I put your phone number down and stuff?
But I can't, because that reference.
We've had cases where, yes, the selectmen will call.
Well, I don't think that.
For a reference.
I think that makes sense, Mary, but I think that their point is more of just.
I mean, I can see, I can see, yeah, but this doesn't go on the website.
Well, it is public.
It doesn't, we haven't been, but it, so I know in the past they have, but we haven't. I haven't done it since I started here, but.
Only because if I, if I agree to be somebody's reference, I'm not necessarily sure I want my cell phone number.
Yeah, but they could ask you. But I mean, how else?
You could individually ask us for the phone number if you wanted to.
No, we should have it available to us without having to seek it out.
Okay.
You know, I, I can see you don't want your address. We never do it for safety people. And your personal phone, but if you're calling a reference, usually it's a business or.
Well, I understand Mary's point, but the references should then be told that these are public documents.
That's what I mean. A lot of people don't understand.
Out and then maybe they may or may not want to.
Pick which phone they're going to use because I always give my personal phone when I'm a reference for someone because it's not, I don't have a work phone here, but if I did, I would never use my work phone to give somebody outside of Sturbridge a personal reference because it's not in my capacity. So now my personal cell phone in that situation would become public record.
Some of these look like they are like HR managers. That's professional combat. So I, listen, I don't have a strong feeling on it either way, but it's.
Well, I mean, I do, I do know we've always.
His emails are public records, so I did stop redacting things on emails because.
Because emails are public too. Yeah.
Yeah, but I do know in the past we've always gotten references and we've called.
Yeah.
You know, the same with.
In the posting, something.
Same with Robin.
Yeah, but it's a little for the town, because you're directly appointing. These are people who technically the reference checks and whatnot are happening, supposed to be happening at my level with advice and consent from you.
It's not a big deal, buddy.
It's not good enough if you just call Robin and ask for the phone number. You want it on the.
No, I don't think it's our job to go seeking. We should be given the information.
Yeah, I mean, if you feel, I mean.
Oh, I feel strong.
Yeah, I mean, there's no reason not to, I don't think. I think if you get first consent to give someone a reference, you're understanding that they're using your phone number for some way, shape or form. And sometimes if you're pining for the government, that's going to be a public record. Just is what it is.
Okay.
You need to approve that one.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Ellen Thibodeau as the part-time program assistant at the Sturbridge Senior, Senior Center at the starting salary of $21.56 effective July 18th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor? The eyes have it. Okay, we are moving on to action item E. Consideration and possible action on an application for a one-day liquor license for Bay State Brewery for the cornhole tournament at the Town Common on July 29th, 2023 from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. One police detail is required.
There it is. It's your corn.
Any discussion? I think she was challenging me. That's what I think it was. Any discussion?
I want to watch that.
Yeah. All right. Do I have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve a one-day liquor license for Bay State Brewery for the cornhole tournament at the Town Common on July 29th, 2023 from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. One police detail is required.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
I'm going to abstain.
And one abstention? All right. The eyes have it. Moving on to action item F. Consideration and possible action on an application for a one-day liquor license, license for Hamilton Rod and Gun Club for a car show at 24 Hamilton Road, Sturbridge on Friday, August 4th, 2023 from 2:00 PM to 1:00 AM and Saturday, August 5th, 2023 from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. All right. Any discussion?
I have a question. I'm a member. Does that mean I have to recuse myself from the vote?
No.
Okay.
Unless you get a dollar on every drink that's sold.
No, I wish I did.
That'd be pretty good.
I'd have to recuse for that.
You know, you have to start accusing yourself.
There's no financial.
No financial gain, so I don't have.
But a disclosure like this is helpful because if there's an appearance of impropriety, then you have, you know, absolved yourself right by disclosing.
Well, that's why I wanted to ask.
What you could do is you could write a disclosure. You give it to me and then I can submit it to the clerk.
Yeah, I think she has.
A resident.
Yeah. She may have disclosure forms at the clerk, yeah.
Because I've signed.
It's voluntary on your part to do, but it never is a bad idea.
So Lynn has the disclosure forms?
Lynn should have the disclosure forms. If not, sometimes people will just literally write me an email.
Yeah. Okay.
And I give that to her.
Do they usually go as late as 1:00 AM when we've done this in the past?
I think this is the same as last year.
It is the same time. Yeah, because we've never had a problem with that.
Yeah, I believe it was a late one last year because I remember us discussing this last year that it was.
Okay.
So, I mean, nobody complains, so, fine.
Okay.
Do they need a separate license for Friday and one for Saturday, or is that implied?
It's implied.
It's implied one day for each one. Okay.
Separate one days.
All right. Just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the application for a one-day liquor license for Hamilton Rod and Gun Club for a car show at 24 Hamilton Road, Sturbridge on Friday, August 4th, 2023 from 2:00 PM to 1:00 AM and Saturday, August 5th, 2023 from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
You can put either one of us down. You could put that it was.
It was a tie. There was a tie.
All right. So I think we're at G now. So, yeah, consideration and possible action on reappointing Heather Egan to Slack as the walk-upon rep. Does anybody have any discussion else I can make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Heather Egan to the Sturbridge Lakes Advisory Committee as the walk-upon representative for a term to expire June 29th, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Action item, action item H. Consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Lee Darin to the Slack as the Cedar Lake representative for a term to expire July 17th, 2025. Any discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Lee Darin to the Sturbridge Lakes Advisory Committee as the Cedar Lake representative for a term to expire July 17th, 2025.
Second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor? All right. And then consideration and possible action on the resignation letter from Kristen Mathelbeck from the Tantasca School Committee effective July 9th, 2023. Conversation?
No.
No.
Do I have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Kristen Mathelbeck from the Tantasca Regional School Committee and to thank her for her work.
Effective July 9th, 2025.
Effective July 9th, 2023.
Second.
Yes, thank you for our hard work and time. All right, all those in favor? All right, the eyes have it. Okay, on to old business. Mary Lou, any old business?
No.
Mary Dowling, any old business?
Just, are we making any contacts with Mass DOT about beautification on that land?
Yeah, so I, we just got this last two week, a week and a half ago, thing settled that I wanted to get settled.
Yes.
I've got my contact names and.
So you'll be looking into it?
Yes.
Beautiful.
Yes.
That's it.
What are we beautifying?
Well, we'd like to, you know, we've talked a lot about those triangles where 84 and 20 and 131 meet. I think two businesses have already adopted small areas, which they've done a nice job of. But if we could try to beautify it, and I still don't, I'd still like to push a little bit more in getting a welcome to Sturbridge sign at that location. I don't know why they would resist if it was put in the middle where.
Yes, it's kind of unobtrusive.
Yeah, but they get their engineers that say, oh, interfere with sight of vision.
We will, we will.
Especially for the show, people have some kind of welcome, some signage.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and they, and the adopt a highway sign is pretty big.
Higher than what we have, yeah.
Right.
Ours could be actually very low and attractive. You wouldn't really want it too high.
No, we would have trouble with low.
I know, I'm like, yeah, I'm kind of behind the steering wheel, but.
All right, that's, that was it for me. How are we moving on the packing lot?
That's coming along. I don't know exactly where it is now, but that is in process. I know Heather's been out there. I believe the engineering and design work is set, so that is, that is coming.
Yeah, Heather gave a, was it two meetings ago, three meetings ago?
Two meetings ago, I think it was.
Yeah, so it was, it was, everything was set.
Yeah.
And then it was primed to go, but then it was, you know, a month ago.
Because I hope.
But it was all positive. It was.
But it's all, it's all progressing without a hitch.
I hope Cooper Road and Route 20 don't.
So I'm going to actually refund that into new business if I.
Okay. So that's kind of got to, well, then I have no old business then.
Well.
What's that? Oh, you're done. I'm sorry.
How are we doing on the evaluation of the town administrator?
So I think we had had a conversation with Robin. It was probably two or three meetings ago. She asked for additional time because we got, gave her her goals in January. And then I think we were going to revisit it when we had the full board and just figure out timing from there. So that's where we are basically with it.
Yeah.
And then, and we had talked about, there were certain raises that were, if I'm recalling correctly, that were automatic within the contract that you signed from.
Yeah, so what happened was when I signed, because you increased the salary, I agreed that I would only take a 2% merit this. that I would only take a 2% merit this year, but it was only for this year. Next year, it would be up to the three or go forward like normal. But the 2.5 automatic that all the non-union got, I got. And then the question was, would I get the 2% this year even though you hadn't had a chance to do a full evaluation of me? The board did vote to support that. But then after this year, it would go to the 3%, up to the 3% based on my performance. So, it was just that we agreed that first year would stop at 2% only because you gave an increase on the salary to start.
Yeah, because the evaluation we use, the goals is really only...
From last January, right?
Yeah, but that's only one out of the 11.
Yeah, I think we basically, if I'm... And again, I might be misremembering this, but I think we basically, I think there were three of us at the time. So, we basically, and, you know, we don't have Chase right now, so we were basically wanted everybody here to figure out the steps at that time.
I think I was one of the three here that made the motion.
I wasn't one of the two.
No, no, no.
I know, I didn't have Wi-Fi at the hospital.
One of the things I... One of the things I wrote out, yeah.
That's an insane excuse. You can just miss the beat and get halfway married.
I know, but they didn't.
One of the things I would ask, though, and I sort of learned this from experience in a past life, I know that people come to the board, employees come to the board, directors come to the board, you all talk to people, and that's fine. I also know that the people who tend to come to the board are the people who tend to be unhappy, not the people who are happy. So, what I would respectfully ask is that if you are taking the consideration of the people who come to you, that you would also reach out to the people who don't come to you. So, that would... If you... So, if there's an evaluation based on my rapport with my team, I would just respectfully ask that it's like either a total 360 review where you talk to everybody. Because what I did learn the hard way, and actually what the board in that particular situation learned, was that the people who came were the upset people, and they started to do a review, actually without telling me. And my directors came to me and said, "Why are they asking us questions about you?" And I... So, I went to the board and I said, "What's going on in an executive session?" And they said, "Oh, well, you know, now we're doing a 360 evaluation." And it actually turned out to benefit me. And I was like, "Go ahead, ask it. I don't care. Ask. I mean, you need to know." But I do ask that if you're going to take the consideration of the people who come...
I think you're...
I always have.
Yeah, I think you're going to be fine with this board because we're process oriented and we... I don't think it's that everybody understands that these things get fairly gray and some of these problems...
I make personally an effort, Robin, just so you know, to reach out to... Because I think that's a very legitimate, you know, concern to all of the department heads. Because one area that you're... That any TA is evaluated on is how effective a manager you are. And so, to that extent, you have to reach out because we don't see day-to-day operations. But absolutely, to just reach out to those who reached out to us, usually if you're very happy, you know, get an email saying, you know, "I love our town administrator."
Right.
So, yes, but now there have been times in the past that some will just not respond.
Right.
And in that case, you can't, you know, do too much about it.
Understood.
They can't find the time.
Yep, and some are uncomfortable.
I think it's reasonable to...
You don't want to force people into...
Of course. And also on your pay, I know it's been tradition that the TA gets what the non-union get as far as...
Yes.
Increase. However, in our charter, it's the Board of Selectmen that decide your pay. So, we could say 10%.
Well, thank you. But I actually... I actually only requested of the board the 2.5 plus the two. And as I said, I agreed to just the two that because it was... Because you did agree to put me on.
Oh, yeah, no, but... But I'm just saying, and...
No, if you want to give...
And I'm sure... Did you know that, Jamie?
Yes, I realized that we get to decide this.
But I do, this year is restricted by my...
Hold on, we have a contract this year.
My letter of agreement this year. Now, next year, you want to give 10%?
Yeah.
I won't be complaining.
Zero.
I'll get you some surroundings at the time, and we'll get you some comparables, and then you can go from there.
Well, I'll tell you.
Yeah, they actually are.
That's it for me.
All right, I have no further old business.
I do have, yeah, a quick new business. So, Cooper Road, please, 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 anybody who's listening, avoid Cooper Road. I was over there today. It is a very, very dangerous hole in the road. It is not just a little sinkhole. It is not just a little water.
I saw it. Somebody sent me a picture.
It is a collapse.
It's huge. It's part of the...
I almost put the picture on Facebook, but then I thought if I put the picture, more people will want to come look.
Right.
So, but please avoid that. And we also found out that DOT is looking to do a one-to-two day closure in the next few weeks of Route 20 to do some repair work. We are meeting with DOT next week about that because we cannot have Cooper not working and Route 20 not working because Downey Hill and Cooper are going to be the two outlets. We're trying about one way in, one way out for those days that 20 is out. So, we're going to work extensively on traffic mitigation for this. And the other thing is we will be working, we've started already reaching out to MEMA and FEMA to see if we may get some... If countywide, the last... This yesterday's event, and however FEMA designates the length of the weather event, it could be two days, three days, 36 hours, 40... You know, FEMA is restrictive. But whatever they designate, we are... We've already started. I've got everybody calculating all hours yesterday, all financial cost to this because every penny that gets added in, this is a million-dollar culvert job. And interestingly, it was not approved at town meeting. So, it is not something that FEMA can say was already approved or ready to go. It was not approved at town meeting, in fact. So, we will be looking at trying to get some reimbursement for this as well as any other damage that got caused over the past few days. So, we are working on that now.
To that end, unfortunately, I think storm seasons like this are going to become more and more regular rather than less regular. And what I drove around, I probably shouldn't have been driving around, but I was driving around on Sunday, and the flooding was remarkable.
Oh, yeah.
The silt running off of projects, I mean, across Route 20. We're not talking like side roads, like from... And I don't think they were doing anything wrong, but from where they're doing the Noble all the way to Cornerstone, you could just see silt getting pulled. So, that means the amount of water that was pushing to pull all that gravel and dirt around, it looked like hay bales because it didn't seem like it wasn't properly marked off. It was considerable. So, I think we probably need to have Heather thinking about where are we going to have... Where additional water is going to create additional pressure on the world because we are going to have more and more washouts and sinkholes and things like that.
So, and that was why Cooper had already sort of been looked... Being looked at, and I think it was Walker Pond is our other one, and she's got our eye on that heavily now because obviously, you know, any undermining that occurred. But absolutely, flood mitigation is top priority.
Yeah.
We met today, we'll be meeting again next week with DOT, so it's a priority now. But I do want you all to know, we are looking at... We started today, we've already reached out to surroundings and working on getting some regional numbers to see if we trip the FEMA number.
And if there's anything to a similar vein, I think, again, unfortunately, I think this type of extreme heat, this type of high-intensity storms and ice are going to be our new normal. So, just if she can recalibrate a little bit.
Yeah, because that Route 20, I mean, for the climate change thing, for 100...
Yeah.
Just the patterns of storms, generally.
We're part of her...
Cycle wherein, whatever, for whatever reason.
But it's always been a problem down there with the...
Yeah, that's a problem.
Was it like the force of the water that caved in?
Actually, yeah, but the Beaver Dams have really created the havoc over there.
On Cooper Road...
You should see the Beaver Dam. It's huge.
Was that contributing to the...
Oh, absolutely.
To the collapse of the road?
It's been contributing to the problem they had began with.
Yeah.
And the Beaver Dam, believe it or not, the Beaver Dam was still holding today. The human damming portion of it had gone, but the Beaver Dam was still in place.
So, the Beaver Dam was partially responsible when the flooding happened?
Yeah, it creates a weird overflow. It holds some back, but it diverts it to the sides, so it comes down to the sides and doesn't all end up in the culvert.
We ought to hire the Beavers.
And the Beaver Dam is on a... They do amazing work. And the... But the Beaver Dam is on private property, so we can't go dismantle it, and even if we did, we'd have conservation issues, so.
All right.
So, all right, so that's new business. So, Mary, new business?
No.
Mary Dowling, new business?
I just had a question. What part of Route 20 does the DOT want to shut down?
Oh, right where the big dig is, our version, the Central Mass Big Dig.
Okay.
So, right, because that waterway under there that's undermining is the same water from Cooper Road.
Yeah.
It's all the same.
That comes down.
Yeah.
Wow.
So, but we will be in conjunction with them because they cannot shut that, and us have Cooper closed.
Yeah, please.
I will brief you as we go.
Thanks, Robin. All right, I don't have any new business, so I think that... Any correspondence? I didn't see any.
Not this time.
All right, no citizens do forum?
Speaking of new business...
Oh, I'm sorry.
New, old, it's, I don't know. Michelle, I know with all you doing minutes.
I'll have some more the next meeting.
Well, I mean, only because...
Yeah.
There is Mass General law about timeframes.
Yes.
All right, yeah, no, it's important to follow, so...
Yeah.
All right, any other new, old business?
I just want to make a suggestion that goes hand in hand. In the past, this is not to this... It's been worse in the past, so I don't want to compare it. But we had, a few years ago, our minutes got really backed up. And so, what I would request is maybe you get, next week, we have this week's, and then you get caught up in the old ones because otherwise, it's never going to be fresh in our minds if we're always playing catch-up. You know, if you do the most recent one and then slowly get caught up on the ones behind, if that makes sense.
And then I got sidetracked with a bunch of other...
No, I know.
So, that is my game plan on Tuesdays to get the minutes done and everything.
But you know what I'm asking is like...
Yeah, but please...
Because I'm always going to be a couple months behind.
So, if you can please have these minutes on...
Who remembers December?
Yeah, and if you... And don't let perfect be the enemy of good, I think is what Mary's saying, so... Okay, anything else from anybody?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you all.
Wait, we have to vote on all of this?
All those in favor? I have Mary Lou.